All right, need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda for September the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Motion could be made in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. All right, um, purchase order, any questions on the purchase order?
I had a question earlier this morning, Mr. President, and I've cleared it up with Tracy. It was in reference to cable billing for IT for Station sixty. We'll pay for it and we'll get reimbursed.
I talked to Gary about that. As you know, that billing for all intent purposes is done. However, they never, they never pulled cable for monitors and TVs. Um, so this, this current week, our IT department's been installing twenty monitors. Uh, it needed the additional cabling for, for the monitors and it all went back to them.
Mr. Davis, real quick, the information, just because it's going time sensitive, information was asked for on the real estate tax yesterday. Or the legislators, by email.
Yeah, I haven't gotten it.
Can you send Gary an email?
Sure.
Have him to send it to Summer?
Yep.
Please, thanks. All right, um, Mr. Davis, you do have one internal budget revision.
Yes, sir, one internal budget revision for the council's considerations submitted by Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator for Department four twenty-eight Information Technology. Uh, Mr. Wine is requesting that he be allowed to decrease line three forty-one supplies and materials by thirty thousand dollars. Um, that fund currently has an unencumbered fund balance of three hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents. With ten point one percent spent to date, can increase line two twenty-three professional services by thirty thousand dollars. That account currently has a deficit balance of nine thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
What's the full?
Um, we, we put, as you know, when we bill IT services through, um, when we collect that funding, it goes back into, um, supplies and materials and then Gary moves it around as he needed. Professional services, um, we use a lot of outside agencies for purposes of, uh, you know, for example, Civic Plus for our web design and things like that, so that's, that's what's paid out of that.
All right, change in status, we have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Holly Kidd as an animal control officer with an annual salary of thirty-five thousand, sixty-five dollars effective October first, two thousand twenty-two. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for Mary, assessor. Um, the four, I'm sorry, for Mary Ann Jacobs as a part-time clerk with an hourly rate of thirteen fifty effective September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Change in status received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Services for Adam Mauk. He is going from firefighter one to firefighter two. His salary will go from fifty-four to twenty-one to fifty-six, zero, zero, five effective September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Letter resignation received from the Emergency Services for Nicholas Pennell effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Adam Mauk is a really, I think, a really great person. Um, he, he's strong on the fireboard and he represents, uh, the, uh, Baker Heights very well. Uh, any questions on the change in status?
I'm glad to see, uh, animal control officers finally getting up in competition, maybe we keep.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, the other thing too, it doesn't have anything to do with any of our employees, but I was out to the driving school at, uh, Jan Drumsen and Ken and Tim out there. Very professional, very professional.
Yeah, my brother, he's working there.
Is, yeah, yeah. So, just wanted to pass that on and told him I, you know, they're doing a good job. Uh, we have approval minutes for September first, two thousand twenty-two, everyone must present, any questions or concern about those? I mean, Tracy did do them. Oh, those were yours, Tracy would be next week, okay.
Next, next week you get to tear them off.
Motion, motion to approve of September one, twenty-two.
Well, everybody was present, so we'll keep them there, we're just tormenting right now. Um, county council calendars, um.
Apparently Eddie thinks you're going a little slow, he's trying to roll the process.
Yeah.
I do have a tendency to try to move things.
He wants to eat lunch.
I thought we were getting lunch.
I don't know, all right. All right, so we have the twenty-second, uh, will be here in the chambers and the boards and commissions, we, um. We have on Monday the nineteenth, four P M, health board, four P M, Easter panel, transit authority, five thirty P M, Main Street Markburg, six P M, planning commission, six P M, airport authority. Tuesday, the twentieth, nine A M, councilperson, vice president, Whitaker will be on R and R. Uh, eleven thirty A M, Parks and Rec, five P M, sewer district, six P M, storm. Wednesday, the twenty-first, six P M, solid waste authority, Thursday, the twenty-second, five P M, ambass party, five P M, library board. Any changes or corrections?
Health board will be in Berkeley County.
Berkeley County, okay, all right. We have a letter of support for Mountaineer Meat Smokers, uh, to extend their outdoor seating, uh, for this weekend on the seventeenth.
I, uh, hope they, on his submission, I didn't see anything about bathrooms, so I hope he's got enough bathroom facilities for these people.
Well, I'm sure that the health department will make sure of that.
I hope so.
You hope so, are you serious?
Well, you know, sometimes they miss.
They come inspect them.
And they'll get their flashlights out and pick up under every table.
All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just got a few this week, um, personal property office error, and we have eight of them. And for the reasons that's listed there, um, they total up to four hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents for those eight.
Okay, we have eight personal property tax exemptions due to officer.
So moved.
Motion been, motion's been made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We have two real estate tax exemptions due to officer.
Yes, sir, we do, they were both fed wrong tax class. Total amount of two thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
All right, there can motion on two real estate tax exemption due to officer.
So moved.
Motion been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. All right, you have one apportionment of assessment due to final divorce.
Do have divorce, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Brett Jenkins, Denise Jenkins. They had two vehicles, total assessed value of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. And we split the bill up so they could get each one pay for their own vehicle, so let's move that.
All right, uh, there can motion on the one apportionment of assessment for final divorce.
I'll move to approve the assessment for final divorce proceedings.
All right, motion been made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Good, thank you.
All right, uh. All right, board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. The only meeting I had this week was the Public Service Water District. Fairly short meeting, but they, there were several project options for South Brook Section Two, which is Hunter Wilson's thing there on Fish Hatchery Road. He required to put an eight-inch main in, they, the district wants to put a sixteen, so they'll pay the difference. And then there's some property they want to go around the border zone instead of cutting through for, I guess, future consideration. Review and approval of pay application for the Woods Water Plant, hundred ninety-six, hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. Prove the pay application for Hazen, where that is Bunker Hill Plant, two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Pay application for Hazen for the Bunker Hill Plant, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Review for the membrane system for the Bunker Hill Plant, six hundred forty-six thousand dollars. They approved the design plans for Duncan Durnut's in Inwood, or that is.
Beside McDonald's.
Yeah, beside McDonald's, behind it or beside of it.
And approved the ultimate mainline extension agreement for B Street Townhouses, thirteen townhouses, a quarter of B Street and Route eleven. And then I think Jim's going to be, come visit us and discuss the apartment funds and all that sort of stuff.
Okay.
That's a, that's a real good opportunity for the Water District, uh, working with the developer at South Brook, getting that, uh, oversized.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, it's an opportunity and, you know, the, the district always, you know, has the future in mind, I think, so.
Well, the good thing about it is, I mean, you're only going to go eight inches deeper and you got twice as much stone beside the pipe and that's it. Well, you're, all you're fitting the pipes and stuff, but, I mean, the bulk of the labor is pretty much the same. Mr. Delia, you look like you're waiting patiently for me.
Um, gee, I'm just doing my J O B here. The, uh, I did have a development authority meeting yesterday, but I'm going to defer that to Mr. Gokenhauer since he's liaison on that board. And he was briefed afterwards, he came in a little late, I was tardy.
All right, uh, Mr. Gokenhauer.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Delia said we did have a development authority yesterday. They have a couple of projects, uh, that are moving forward at, have, you know, a positive outlook on, uh, and kind of dragging along. So there's some things moving there. Interviews are set up for the twenty-seventh for the director's position. So we had five applicants that we chose out of twenty-two, uh, one has since declined. So we'll be interviewing four folks on the twenty-seventh.
I was thinking there might be someone back away.
And I had the opportunity the other day to, uh, join in the latter part of the L A P C meeting. Just took the opportunity to thank them on behalf of the council for their efforts and their time.
Got some good members.
They do, it's, that's a real good committee and it's, it's been strong for a good while.
Well, it's, it's evolved when it first started, when I was on it. It was just, you know, to delineate what the industry had on their sights and fire companies could anticipate what's needed before they got there. And it's now gotten bigger than that, bigger membership and everything else.
Yeah, it's much more broad than that and got, got some really good folks on there, you know, even on a federal level. So it's a real good committee.
I had fire board last Thursday night and pretty typical meeting. I think the biggest conversation there was, um, Hedgesville Fire Department Company Thirty has purchased a ladder truck and it's all about, um, whether the fire board will assume the maintenance and insurance and all that stuff. So trying to work through that, trying to get the records of, of how the truck was taken care of and all that stuff.
Was used?
It is used and it's been refurbished, it sounds like to me.
It got.
Yeah, you know, and they're buying it themselves, the truck. It's just, you know, the fire board wants to see, you know, make sure it was maintained properly so they can, before they commit to take care of something that, like low miles, I mean, just like all the trucks, they're low miles and higher hours, but low miles. So, but anyway, that, that's the main thing, collections are going well. So that's all I've got to report on. Any vacancy activity on any of the boards?
I'd like to, uh, reappoint Steve DeRitter to the L A P C.
Having a motion on the floor, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Another good member.
What part does he represent?
Water, water.
Water.
He runs the water plants.
Okay, all right.
Brian Shade runs the maintenance and the water. Steve runs the plants.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make the motion, I have three vacancies on the C V B right now. I'd like to, uh, appoint Matthew Howard to Todd Funkhauser's position. They're, uh, I think their historical education side is fairly similar. So I think that it would, uh, it would, it would be, uh, just to put him in that position.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Anything else?
That's it.
Oh, I thought you said you had three of them.
I got three vacancies.
Oh, all right.
Two now.
All right, Mr. Davis, let's go on and check up on some of your stuff, I guess.
Yes, sir.
We have, first one was snow removal, uh, for one twenty-two Waverly Court.
Yes, sir, as the council's aware, on September first, twenty twenty-two, we did open bids, for snow removal services needed for one twenty-two Waverly Court. If you remember, this is a, um, we, we pay for the removal of, of snow and ice on the entire park yard and then we bill, um, the church for their portion and it's kind of a good relationship.
What portion is the church?
Yeah, it's third, right, the third. We received three bids, uh, Pittsburgh Chapel Pines, which is the current, uh, snow removal contractor, who's had the contract for a number of years, Riverside Farms LLC out of Hedgesville and Lawn Enforcement LLC out of Kearneysville. The current contract with, uh, Pittsburgh Chapel Pines expires on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Jack and, and Tracy and I reviewed the bid, uh, we agree that only Pittsburgh Chapel Pines LLC and Riverside Farms LLC meet all of the criteria listed, uh, in the R F P. Therefore, we're recommending that, um, snow removal services for one twenty-two Waverly Court, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Pittsburgh Chapel Pines LLC and the amounts listed in your read ahead.
How's been their previous performance?
They've done, they've done a really good job for us, yeah. Jack is real happy with how responsive they are. Their services are a little bit different, um, than, than what we use for typical snow removal, only because, you know, if it snows on Friday night, um, Jack and his guys aren't, don't have to be on it right away, for the, the rest of the building, except for law enforcement and nine-one-one. Whereas if it snows Friday night and Saturday at one twenty-two, they have to be on that pretty quick. So it's open for church on Sunday, so it's, it's worked out well.
Mr. President, I'm ready to accept the bid from Pittsburgh Chapel Pines for snow removal.
Second motion.
Have a motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries and let's go ahead and talk about the flu shot clinic, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, as the council's aware, for many, many years, um, this council has sponsored a flu shot clinic for county employees. Typically, the flu shots are paid for by the county, uh, and for county employees and then the employee pays for flu shots for, that may be administered to their family members. The final net cost to the county for our flu shot clinic is minimal because the Health Department actually builds Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, for the, the flu shot. So if the county employee and the county or, and or family member is covered under our group insurance, Highmark pays the total cost of, of the, of the flu shot. The Berkeley County Health Department has agreed to conduct the flu shot clinics again this year at our request. The flu shot clinic would be held from nine A M. to ten thirty A M. on Wednesday, September twenty-first, here in your, uh, in the Dunn Building, in your, your meeting room. The cost is the same as last year, twenty dollars per person. Any employees unable to make the flu shot clinic can go to the Health Department, uh, produce their county I D badge and get the flu shot there and then they'll still bill it.
Are they going to offer the COVID booster too?
We have talked to Bill about that, um, he said, of course, it's available now at the Health Department, but we have not made any arrangements to do it here.
All right, need, um, a motion to move forward with the flu shot clinic.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. I think we're just going to go ahead and take a break, that way I'll be right on schedule for the rest of the things and be able to, um, move forward. So we'll take a break. So we'll take a break.
All right.
I gotta leave lunchtime.
We'll be on that before.
So we're going to get to this. If he gets 200,000 dollars, he can actually...
I'd like to be...
We can get 150,000. We can squeeze in.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
All right.
I should know that.
We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Barbara Frankenberry, Chandel Valley Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, Proclamation, Constitution Week. Barbara, come on now, you know the routine.
I know, I was just lamenting that you couldn't be Barbara. I know, that's my name.
Okay, I was going to say...
But I don't go by that.
I'm terrible with names.
But she also needs a name replacement.
I see. And you got a...
Let me get ready.
You got a copy of the proclamation, right?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. All right, well, welcome back.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
It's always good to see you.
Thanks.
I would agree, it's great to see you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my members that I have with me because I'm always happy that they are willing to come. Starting on our left is Suzanne Horner, then it's Darrell Wright, and she is our new regent, which is our president.
Okay.
And then we have Nina Kay and Tina Marquardt. And there's also a member of the Liam Hinchell chapter here.
Yes.
Okay. All that, right?
That's next.
Okay, sounds good. And I'm Barbie Frankenberry.
Yes, ma'am.
For 70 years.
We know you well.
Sir?
We know you well.
Actually, only 51 years, Barbie Frankenberry.
Well, congratulations on the over the 50.
Yes.
Right? It's only... Very few people make it over 50 years old. I think 50% of the people just call quits without trying hard, huh?
It's been a good run.
Yeah, yeah. Some high and low spots, I'm sure. But, you know, you gotta work on them, right?
Yep, we're a little bit of a low spot right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob's not well, so...
All right, so go ahead and read the proclamation and then we'll adopt it. How's that?
Sounds good.
All right.
And I will put on my reading glasses. I'm wearing contacts and I can see fine. But having had COVID, I'm not sure that that's what caused it. But I had to get new contacts for reading because I have mono vision. I really get an education this morning, I can tell you, right? But you know that when I am here.
We do, we do.
The Berkeley County Council and the Shenandoah Valley Chapter National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, sponsors September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week each year. And whereas, September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord the official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Berkeley County Council, Martinsburg, West Virginia, and the Shenandoah Valley Chapter, NSDAR, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly... I like that word. Protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained in witness thereof. And then you all sign your name.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Frankenberry.
Now I'm...
See, I'm gonna pick on you all the way.
That's okay, I can take it, too.
I only get to do it once a year, right?
Right.
All right.
Unless I was here for apple harvests asking for money.
There you go.
But I'm not anymore.
Yeah. Haven't seen you there. So, okay, need a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Mr. President, I am heartily moved to adopt the Shenandoah Valley Chapter National Society, Daughters of American Revolution, as Constitution Week.
Have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Great. Someone had... I don't know if it's Facebook or it was on TV. And they said, "Well, why do you celebrate Constitution Week every year?" What happens if you don't?
People forget about it, right?
Right. And you lose our rights.
Right.
Because somebody will come along and say, "Well, you know, we have to... We really do have to be diligent about this."
I think a lot of our constitution is being...
Challenged.
Challenged today, exactly.
Well, I think we have to remember, too, when it was written, it was a different time. And so, sometimes we can't take things quite literally. But I think we still have to understand the meaning behind it.
I think it is held up very well.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's held up very well.
Indeed, indeed, it certainly has.
I think it's amazing how well it's held up.
But that's because, in my opinion, we want it to. Right?
Yeah, without it, we'd be in trouble.
Exactly.
It's a tremendous foundation for this country to build on.
Exactly. And as long as we, we, all of us everywhere, want it to be the strongest document, then it will be. That's my personal opinion.
Sure.
And what's that, Edja? Sir?
I think you're spot on.
Well, I... That's why we come every year. You know?
Yep, yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Stick around, we'll take a quick break when we get done for photos, too. All right, next on our agenda, we have Joanne Chrishack. Is that for William Hinshaw, Chapter of National Society of Daughters of American Revolution, Proclamation Constitution Week. Good morning, Joanne.
Good morning, you. Thank you. Thank you for having me here.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time that I've done this. And I didn't realize I needed to bring the proclamation.
It's there on the podium, it should be a copy.
Oh, here it is. I apologize.
That's all right.
Whereas, it is the privilege and the duty of the American people to commemorate the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees issuing a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Berkeley County Council, Martinsburg, West Virginia, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And urge all citizens to thank the Constitution and reflect the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. I therefore, here unto, set my hand and cause the seal of Berkeley County, West Virginia, to be affixed to this 15th day of September of the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you for reading.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for reading that. Entertained a motion to adopt the proclamation, Constitution Week for William Hinshaw, Chapter of the National Society of Daughters of American Revolution.
She'll move.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We'll take some photos. So, let's take a break for photos real quick.
Okay. We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Lane Mauk County Clerk request for additional funding.
I have it. They had to do with preservation and. This, this is the books that we're getting done here. Let's open the one thing up. What happens is, is we get every page encased. This is what I'm trying to re-save.
What are, what are these?
These are the land books on the Circuit Clerk side that go downstairs. They go from eighteen six, eighteen fifty-four to nineteen twenty-five, I believe. We have some money for some of these. We've got this coming in from the grant from the state regarding the land books. Then I wanted to show you.
The land books being the deed books.
These are the old books, yes, regarding the old land, the deed. This is, those are not deed, they're land books. That's the layouts on all the survey, surveys that went with the deeds. This is the will books index. And the condition that we're in here is totally disintegrating. Just wanted to show you what we're dealing with.
They accessed much by the lawyers?
This, these are, yes, definitely. So, people fail to realize, the will books that you're looking at right there, it's in pieces. They're accessed all the time because every genealogist is coming somewhere. And they always are looking, particularly for the old family tree that's way back. And even on family, genealogy and all that other stuff, ancestry.com, sometimes there's questions. This, this is the Bible, these older, these older books. What you see in front of you is for the will books seventeen seventy-two to eighteen seventy-four. There are six missing. There are nineteen books. And the coverage is four hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven pages. The total expenditure to get just for the first hundred years of eighteen seventy-four is fifteen thousand, sixteen, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty cents. To get those to look like this. And that type of binder. What had happened in nineteen seventy-eight, P.O. Faulkner had passed on and quite a bit of money came to the county. And all the white canvases that are down there now have been purchased. And there was some lamination done, which I'm going to talk about on the deed books. Some of the eight deed books were laminated with a similar type covering. However, you know, that's been a while since nineteen seventy-eight. That was when the biggest expenditure was done to save anything. Then going to the deed books from seventeen seventy-two to eighteen thirteen, two are missing, eight are laminated. But to get those up to some, and that's just a drop in the bucket, I'm just picking a group of numbers here. And it's like fourteen thousand to get those functional to look like that. But to complete the deed books to sixty-five is almost forty thousand dollars. I'm just trying to show you what the preservation needs here are in the Brooklyn County.
Is that stuff available?
Yeah, this stuff, this, this stuff right here. And what the issue is, this is a Mylar, which is a gasoline, degrivally, petroleum type. So the price, when I started, this one sheet was a dollar seventy-five. Now it's two fifty. Because I got the cash to various latest prices here. So the prices are going up on those things. I'm just letting, letting you know on that issue. But as I said, the last big lamination, which was on eight, was done in, in, in seventy-eight. And a number of the books have been canvassed. There's a lot of canvas books down there. But that's just a canvas cover. It didn't deal with the pages. Like, this has got a canvas cover on it, but the pages are falling out of book. So that's a real issue. The second thing I want.
So, so while you're on that topic, because I don't know a whole lot about it. Why are we, are we taking these and doing electronic copies of these so that there's a file moving forward? Because at some point, you know, you can keep protecting and keep protecting, but at some point you gotta keep doing that again and again and again. So if you create an electronic file, then you should be able to limit the access to those books.
I'm trying to create an electronic file, but because we're two hundred and fifty years old and in this condition now. There, even electronic files aren't going to say that if we don't get them sleeved.
I understand that, but, but you, but the big deterioration, I would think, would be the access to it.
Okay. We have, right now, Mormons have given us the first hundred deed books on microfilm. And so that's been put to our system. Right now, between the cooperation of the library and the courthouse, we have the digitalization machine for the microfilm. For the, for the first so many will books that they, the ones that they do have on microfilm, that we're in the process of doing. So I'm attacking it all directions, trying to, to take care of it. If we want to do the books, I'll say, we want to do the books digitalization. If you use the machine, if they're bound, and the particular machine they need is like thirty-seven thousand dollars. If we get them in the sleeves, then we can run them through by laying them flat, taking pictures. Which is, you, you know, the, the price is, well, like I said, fifteen thousand dollars and, and for nineteen books. And then we have them in a flat thing that we can go ahead and, and then scan very easily according to a Gary. Whereas the machine itself is, once you get it, you know, if you get through all the books, because it's, it's opening the books and, and more stress on the spine and everything else. And I don't think this book, the condition it's in, would, would hold if we turn it and open it up and start Y and try to do a digital. They're in fact such bad shape, I don't think you can digitize it. You know what I'm saying? I don't think the machine will work. Because it'll cause further damage. They're that bad a shape. And I was hoping, Mr. Whitaker would be here because of his Italian background. There were some things I found I wanted to show you because I'm talking preservation. In nineteen oh five, the governor issued a statement about all of the Italians in the state of West Virginia. So if an Italian died in the state of West Virginia, I'll show you this. This is a signed document from Governor Dawson. That if they died in West Virginia and had no heirs in West Virginia, then the month, the stuff was to go to the consulate in Fairmont, West Virginia. And these are the documents for Fairmont. And then they went on down the road to, over to Italy. There's the other one. So these, so our Italian heritage with the quarries and all of those issues is a very, because we had this because the clerk was the one that handled the wills and, and has access with any property. They were to package it up according to this information and send it to the consul, who would then take it to their, their little community in Italy and the spirit types of the family.
So with the price of these sleeves attached to the fuel market, how large of a need is it to be gotten in the next six months? Because hopefully, I mean, we're seeing where fuel prices are starting to trend down.
I, I, I see that, but I'm happy with it because once the fuel reserves are gone, the trend down is not going to continue. I mean, I don't see that, but, you know, it's whatever. Because I, I think the situation is that as soon as the election's over, it's going to go back up. That's my, my opinion. So I don't know. But I'm just saying, the price has gone up recently from a dollar seventy-five to two fifty. I'm just saying from the time I ordered the first batch that I had the funds for.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make you aware of what our current needs are. I'll be bringing you some other things later on during the year. But I just wanted to show you those things. And particularly, I thought Mr. Whitaker would be here. But Mr. Delia, there's, an Orsini has signed one of those. He was the counsel on that one issue that came through.
All right. Well, we'll take your stuff under advisement for now, and then we'll see what we can do. Okay?
Yes, and then Tracy has to have the grant.
Yes.
Mr. President, if I'm, if I may, as, as Tracy's ready, as, as you know, and I put it in your packet. The State Attorney did issue correspondence stated August seventeenth, which I put in your packet.
The mayor's.
That indicates that any of the incumbent elected officials, as they leave office. Must assure that fifty percent of the budget remains for the.
So this is the document.
Incoming elected official. I've assured both Mrs. Mauk and Mrs. Sine that the council, through state budget revision, will take care of salaries. Because current, current budget does not reflect the increase in the elected salaries or the increase that the council authorized for county council employees. They have been reminded that they, they must remain within the fifty percent threshold for their operating budget. However, we've never had a clerk that's gone out of office during an election year. So the lion's share of the Voters Registration Department four thirteen will be expended by the end of the year. So my intent is to work with Mrs. Mauk and come to the council. Probably in late.
So basically fifty percent of the set budget, when we set it, has to be there, not the adjusted budget.
Right.
Okay.
So. And that's the rule, but that, yeah, you're exactly right. Doesn't make any sense because of the old.
Budget before the end of the year. So what we're going to have to do is put, put money in there.
Perfect.
Make it right, that hopefully the incoming county clerk won't spend.
Well, does that reimbursement come back to us?
Well, the reimbursement that Tracy's going to talk about would typically be put back in four thirteen. If the council agrees to this, then, then we will, once that money comes in, we'll just, we'll put it back in the general fund.
That doesn't make sense to me at all. Man, that doesn't make sense to me at all, because.
We've never dealt with this situation before.
Yeah, but if you have, if you, I mean, it's had to been dealt with somewhere else in the state, I would think. And if you all, if all of your funds are spent out, obviously, in, in the calendar year, except for your operational. Except for your operational, I think there's a very good argument you could pose that you, you need the money for your payroll and those type of things to, and, and your, you know, your operational costs.
But I've got to call into war now about that very thing.
Right.
Because I don't want to put, you know, number one, I don't want Mrs. Mauk to be in violation of what she's been.
Right, I get it.
But at the same time, I don't want to put a lot of extra money in four thirteen that could be spent by the incoming clerk for the remainder of the year when there's no elections.
Right.
So.
And Mr. Davis, another problem is that we just got this, twenty-five or thirty thousand has come in that was left over from the primary that wasn't filled back until I first. So that, that's another kick in the butt for the election.
Well, I think we absolutely have to be able to cover the, the election with the poll workers and those expenses associated with that, you know.
And what we may do is put the money into the budget to cover Mrs. Mauk. But then in January, through state budget revision. Take it back out.
Okay. And now there's a lot of things that we prepay upfront too, well, the council budget. I mean, the courthouse account and stuff like that. So I guess watch them as well.
Yeah, if, if you look at, as of yesterday, the, the total budget spending, January, February are big, or, I'm sorry, July, August are big months because we, for example, spent a million dollars on property insurance during those months. We're still under twenty percent. So that by the end of the year, I can assure the council that we will be, the, the two outgoing council members that will be under that. I'll have to make sure you're under that fifty percent threshold that's not issued.
And, and Mr. Davis, Tom. Oh, here he is. One second. Tom, stand up here a second. He's the new Voters Registration Supervisor, Tom.
Good morning, Tom.
He hadn't been here as that position's on, but recommended that.
All right, sounds good. Good to meet, good to see you, Tom. I've, I've passed you, right? But, yeah, got a challenge to get ready before November, I'm sure. You're going to do it. That's what I like to hear.
Yes.
Positive. And I know you'll do it. All right, Ms. Tracy, tell us about this grant.
This is the West, State of West Virginia Secretary of State, twenty twenty Help America Vote Again, otherwise known as HAVA. This is a sub-grant from the state for related expenses to election security and equipment. The total match for security is fifteen percent. Total match required for equipment is fifteen, fifty percent. The county clerk voter registration office is applying for a reimbursement grant from the West Virginia Secretary of State's office, HAVA sub-grant. Which helps counties with assistance for voting equipment and security supplies. The grant funding will pay for the following. Zip, zip ties and seals at three hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents at an eighty-five reimbursement, which is three hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-three cents. Tamper evident seals at six hundred and forty dollars at an eighty-five percent reimbursement for five hundred and forty-four dollars. Scanner ballot boxes, there was five of them purchased, at thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars at a fifty percent reimbursement. For fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars for a total reimbursement through this grant, sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents.
What's a scanner ballot box?
Sorry, large DS two hundred boxes, the ones that, the ballots go into at the end of the day.
All right. Interfering motion for the. Acceptance or?
Approval to apply.
Approval, okay. We need a motion to, or you want approval on that, or you want just direction to go forward?
Approval.
Okay. Interfere in motion, I'm sorry.
Motion to, to apply for the twenty twenty-two HAVA sub-grant in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents.
I have a motion for a second. Any further discussion?
The other fifteen percent, I guess you're.
It's already in the budget. And that'll all be part, you know, I'll sit down, November, we'll calculate what you need to put in there. And then we'll, we'll make the adjustment so Mrs. Mauk isn't, isn't exposed.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
The only other comment is, we will be there Saturday at quarter four to rent the, the DAR groups to do the ringing of the bell, so anybody's welcome to come, watch the activities.
Thank you, Ms. Mauk. All right, moving on to Mr. Davis again. Follow-up discussion on, on supplemental funding.
Yes, sir. As the council is aware, since, I don't know, February, March, we've been talking about some supplemental funding needs. Including some of the projects that, that you agreed to fund through the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Some of the general funding co-severance funds that have been committed and encumbered. We have a RFP on the street for tax-exempt bank-qualified funds in the amount not to exceed twenty million dollars. And I'm happy to say that there is a lot of interest in, in that particular RFP. And then we have some supplemental funding projects. We've, we've had some, some good discussion over the past several weeks about the different projects. Since the, the spreadsheet that I gave you last week as the direction of the council. I did increase funding for five twenty South Raleigh Street, which falls under tax-exempt and bank-qualified funds, to ten million dollars. To reflect the council's consensus that we look at a three-story addition to the day report center. So that was increased. I also included, under the American Rescue Plan Act funding, if you look at the restricted funds. I added some matching monies there that you discussed last week. Of one million, six hundred thousand dollars for the Pike Side Water Project and a million dollars for the Potomac River Plant Project. Jim is here to talk to the council about the projects you asked him, he come in. And kind of particular councilperson Delia had some questions about the, the Pike Side Water Project. So Jim, if you want to come up and address the council. He did provide, I did reach out to him last week and ask him for some, some information, which I've, I've provided to the council, so you should have gotten that by email.
Okay, all right. Jim, good morning.
Morning.
Seems like the grant went well this, last Wednesday, I believe it was last Wednesday.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we had a, a good outcome from the IJDC on this first phase. And, so Davis, just to clarify, the one point six was for the river plant.
Okay.
One million's for the Pike Side job.
Okay.
Which I still want two point six, man.
But.
Yes, sir. Bottom line's the same. Yes, sir.
Yeah, right. Yeah. All right, so councilperson Delia was asking.
I think Eddie was right. Didn't he say, didn't he correct you last week?
Just say that again.
Councilperson, or, Delia was asking about the scope of work of the Pike Side six million dollar project. You guys still, could you explain to him about what that entails?
Well, we've been in, we've been in several, you and I and a group have been in several conversations over the past year about water projects throughout the county. So I was trying to get more clear definition on exactly what we're talking about. And it's obviously important on other boards that I sit, because we have, we have possibilities of, of doing expansions for growth. And contracts that are contingent upon water, so.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to share that. I did give you that summary that an engineer put together with regards to all the activities affiliated with the Pike Side job. So you got that, I trust?
I got it. No, I don't know. You, you say, you send that out?
It was, it was sent out to a response to Allen, so.
Yes, it was in an email. I responded to Allen and included it in there, so I gave you a very thorough ten-page analysis.
It was pretty voluminous, so I didn't print it out.
Okay. It was, in a very generic summary, our ability, our, our objective is always to move water from where it is to where it needs to be. And we have the majority of our water at the river plant up on the north end of the county. And the desire is to improve the ability to move it from where it is down into the Taylor Station area through these Pike Side, or these water mains referred to as the Pike Side Project. So if you look at all the details, it's a significant increase in redundancy in water mains from Route Nine near the jail, all the way along Kelly Island Road. All the way up to our Grubbs Corner Tank and then replace all the water main on Payne's Ford Road, which presently is very undersized and limits the ability to flow water from the tank into the industrial zone over there. Which we all know we have more fault looking to move into and have water service. So that's what this objective is all about. And also, we're increasing the capacity of the ability to take water from the city of Martinsburg, along the Pike Side Booster Station we have down there. And move it into the industrial zone area. And also, part of the bigger picture here is that we were desiring to put a second water tank in the industrial zone. So we'll have a better efficiency in moving water either from the city or from our river plant into that area. Where then it's available continuously to address any water needs for people that are there now or may be coming.
Right, Tom.
Yes, sir. We're gonna, we, we got all the plans in place. We're waiting for the developer who's building one of the warehouses to square up a few things. And then we'll have another tank, basically where the new Clorox warehouse is. So we'll be that much closer to the southern part of the industrial zone and then have the ability to, to distribute water from that point more efficiently.
So, so my understanding that you've got, so the, what we voted on last week was, and you're calling that the Pike Side Water Project?
Yes.
Okay, so the Pike Side Water Project is basically just getting the line, the sixteen inch line you have that's down Grapevine currently. To, you're, you're just getting it, that part of that project is just getting the line to Grubbs Tower and then back down to Route eleven, tying into Worms, or the Warm Springs, or Big Springs, I mean. And going down Route eleven a little bit, so it doesn't go all the way down and connect into the industrial area down at, down at Taylor Station area.
Not at this phase.
Okay.
It sets the table for the next component.
Right, I understand. So, so then, the, then, then how far out is the thought process for the next one? Is that contingent on funding? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're going to move forward and I, I'll be glad to leave you with the other plans that we have for that section, which we've already drawn up and we know what needs to be done. So we got, we got a, as a general summary here also, we got these Pike Side water mains, we got the river plant, which is next, which we can talk about as far as the other contributions you've, you've been kind enough to make, to help that facilitate and move forward. And we got the Bunker Hill Water Plant, which we got to rebuild, which is under design and expected to go out to bid in the spring. And that's a forty million dollar job right there. And then we got all these water mains that need to be done around the Bunker Hill Plant to make that facility efficient. And then we got this water tank we want to build that allows us to have more water in the industrial zone. And then all the water mains in that general area, which then allow the water to flow more efficiently. So it's all in that report I have. And I actually, I gave it to Chairman Copenhagen last week when we met. And, but if you like, I can certainly share, I'll send you a copy directly if you like, kind of outlining all these things.
The one thing, Jim, the Pike Side Water Project goes down Winchester Avenue, must have comes out on Payne's Ford Road. Goes south on Winchester Avenue. And it probably ties into that new sixteen inch main that goes back to P and G. Is that right?
It's twelve.
Is a twelve?
Twelve that goes into P and G.
Okay.
There's a sixteen out on Development Drive beside the All Mine paving. There's a sixteen inch main there, to my understanding. And then it goes to.
There's a twelve. There's no sixteens over there. We put a sixteen going into that new tank site, but that's just a stub off of a twelve.
We would give a bad information somewhere then. That, that was, that hybrid on that sixteen inch main is always very valuable to us. That's what we were told, a sixteen inch.
You don't have any sixteen on there?
And it used to be that the main, the biggest mains that we had was eight inch, so it's a big improvement.
So, so it sounds like you're, you're going to be able to increase the volume to, to get to big springs and down to tie into the P and G. get to Big Springs and down to tie into the P&amp;G line at this point with what you have. What, where, where are the projects ranked moving forward? So obviously, you guys have some type of master plan on where you're going to be spending money next and where your expansions are. How far down the road is, is it, is the plan that you had a loop figured that would go down Route 11, loop around Corning Way and come back in? How far down the road is that loop planned to be moving forward?
Soon as we get the, going on the tank at the Clorox site, where they're gonna begin the process of obtaining easements that are needed for the lines that we've identified as needing to be upgraded in that area. And once again, it's all in our report, so I'll be glad to.
Right, so you have to have the tank before you can do the line, is that what you're saying?
Oh, we would get the tank started and then simultaneously obtain the easements and begin the design work for the installation of the lines to make all the connections and the loop complete. So, yeah, it's amazing how much we gotta get going, but find the money and then we'll be able to get there. Not you find it, but we, and then obviously find the revenue to pay for all the loans that we're gonna have to obtain.
So does this expansion that we're talking about right now, does this allow enough water flow to be able to cross the interstate at this point, to be able to, to be able to supply the project that the development authority has been talking about?
Once that tank is available.
So you're saying that, that, because we had, you and I had a conversation before and said that there was enough, that there was, it was allowable to do that at this point, but you're not gonna get enough water to handle anything other than that project. So now you're saying that you couldn't do it at this point without the water tower?
The water tank needs to be there for a reservoir for a pump station to move the water across the interstate, because it goes to a higher elevation over there. So before you have a pump station, you gotta have the water. And then you'll be able to do something on that side by pumping the water over there, which will then probably involve another storage tank on that side to pump the water too.
Right.
But if that's an area that we anticipate will continue to grow, then this would be the fundamental engineering needed to support the water supply over there.
Okay.
So that tanks first, get that in place, then you've set the table to be able to continue down the road.
Right.
Across the interstate.
Okay.
The city of Martinsburg was, was doing a water analysis to see what their abilities were from their two plants. Has that been completed, do you know?
I have not had any correspondence since we might have talked to them four or five months ago when they first began. So I'm, I'm hearing nothing. I guess it's underway, but that's all I know.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the 16-inch main that you, you're running down on Winchester Avenue, see it where it stops at the pump station, booster pump station there at Pike Few Acres. That 16-inch main won't go to Big Springs, or is there already a 16-inch main coming off Big Springs?
We have a booster pump station just south of the Big Springs.
Right.
We are taking the water from, that's where we obtain it from. And then we have to pump it because of the hydraulic grades into our system.
So the pipe coming from Big Springs to your booster pump is what size?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's probably 12.
Yeah.
But that's fine. It's, it gets to the station, and then we just, we're improving the ability to flow it and the redundancy, so if something goes wrong, we have two lines moving into the area we need it.
Right.
So we're not anticipating challenges with getting a significant volume of water, assuming the city has it through their Big Spring plant, and then we'll have the means to transmit it.
But you still got a 400,000 gallons a day reservoir that you can get from the city of Martinsburg right now, right? You're only getting like 600,000 gallons a day, and you're, you're obligated to a million?
We presently have an agreement to take up to a million gallons a day from the city. We average about 200,000 a day.
Oh, 200,000.
We don't, as we speak, we don't need it with, when we have ample supply of water. But, you know, going forward, we need to have a more of a concerted plan to utilize their resource that they possess, and how do we use it for the benefit of the entire community? So once they know exactly what the capacity of their plant is, we hope that we can begin the conversation to say, how can we best utilize that resource in a economically and efficient way for everybody?
Let me ask you a question. Now, one of y'all said in one of our conversations, probably here in the chamber, that you're guaranteeing them revenue on a million gallons of water.
We.
Are we paying them for a million gallons and only using 200?
No, we have a minimum take of the 200,000 a day, that's why we do take it, because we either take it or we pay for it and don't take it.
Okay.
That's the minimum.
So that's the guarantee, is the 200?
Yeah. And we also contribute to the cost of the bond that was issued to pay for that particular plant.
Right, that portion of it, is that?
That's not inclusive in the minimum take.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for Jim?
No. Thank you for your, your support on the matter. Well, we got a lot of things going on. There's a lot to do, and thank you, Mr. Barnhart, for always showing up at our meetings and contributing and being a liaison for us. I think we got a lot more conversations we can have, because we got $120 million worth of infrastructure just to stay current with what we need to do, and we're trying to set the table, so as people do come to town, we can be a supporter of the projects.
And you're making an effort not to increase rates?
The more we get from sources that are not our customers, the less the correlation will be to the cost of water. So that's, ultimately has to be paid for. The only variable we're looking at these days is who's gonna be the contributor and what the percent from everybody's gonna be.
Jim, when, when you had, when Senator Capito was here in, brought administrator region to the Bunker Hill Plant, have you heard anything at all from those requests in a positive or negative way?
Yes, sir. We, we have, the only thing, we were put into a appropriation bill that I guess would come out when the federal government commences its fiscal year in October, is $3 million is in there, identified for the water mains in front of the Bunker Hill Plant. We were hopeful that there would be some consideration to helping with the cost of the Bunker Hill Plant, but that did not make the final list of projects that might be appropriated out of Washington.
All right. Tracy, if the council so chooses to commit some funding to the Pike Side Water Project and the Potomac River Plant totaling 2.6 million, that would qualify under our restricted funds, right?
Okay.
I put that there, I just wanted to, wanted you to verify it. All right.
Yes, I believe the WDA, who's the final issuance on this, this grant, meets on October 10th, so hopefully we'll have a definitive understanding of.
That's on the water plant?
That's on the Pike Side.
Oh.
And then we're still working through the IJDC on the water, the river plant, and then that $24 million ask and the 1.6 million contribution would be in the plan.
Okay.
So we got some time on that. If, if we know that the, the million dollars is gonna be available to help contribute, then at least we can tell them that, and they'll, because of the politics, they'll be very, more supportive as from what we understand.
And I think I was the one that messed that up. I, I was for sure that the Pike Side was 1.6 and the plant was 1, because it was seen backwards to maybe the, on the amount of the, of the money, excuse me, requested, so I'll take the blame for that one, Mr. Davis.
I'll put the spreadsheet together.
Thank you, Jim.
Please let me know if you need anything in the future.
All right.
Keep you up to date. Thank you all.
Very much, thank you.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Davis, what we, we've got here?
Um, what, what I'd like to do, and I think we, I think we've captured all the projects that, that you've indicated over the past several months, if you could just start at the top, and I've asked Elizabeth and Tracy to be here to correct me when I'm wrong, and I'm sure they'll be quick to do that, and I appreciate that. I'm starting with the American Rescue Act funds, as you know, we received a total allocation of $23,147, $23,147,570, 10,000, 10 million of which has been identified by the feds as being what they call non-restricted funds that we can use. We have a little bit more discretion in using, and then the, the balance of, of 13 million, 13.1 million and change being restricted funds.
Well, but the Rescue Plan Fund for putting in an interest claim savings.
Yeah, or whatever.
How much have we made from the interest, you know?
Yeah, I'd have to pull the, the sheet.
I don't know if it's a lot or 1%.
Well, it's about $4,000 a month.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you'll be lucky to get 1%, but I know that we're still riding on that deal, right?
We are.
So we're getting twice as much as we're supposed to be getting, let's put that away.
So of the non-restricted funds, the council have, has agreed to set aside 800,000 for the acquisition of the additional property.
Now, we've already, we already approved that.
That's already, but I'm just kinda giving you a.
Right, but, but we're, we're.
We're working on that now, that, with the, with Roach Fund.
Is that correct, Andy?
Yes. And then it will, it will come in slightly under 800.
Yes, slightly less than 800, waiting on getting.
Okay, all right.
350,000 for the North Berkeley Park.
And we've already done that one.
We've already done that.
And that one's in the works.
Correct.
And that's, and that's for improving, or maintaining, but developing.
Correct, that's.
Yeah, it's $150,000 from the general public down there, and 350 from us.
So, and slightly more than 7.3 million for the Dunn Building.
Okay, which?
Which totals 8.845,296.
It's a 7.
And also, that involves all the planning and.
That's all-inclusive, but as you know, we opened bids, just for the construction portion, which we had budgeted at about 6.6 million.
Right.
It came in at 9.9 million.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we're short on that number.
We're gonna put that out for bid.
Back.
Back out for bid.
Yeah.
So what I'm, what I'm suggesting, and of course, it's completely up to you, you'll see that the total restricted money right now is 8,455,296.
Non-restricted.
Of the non-restricted.
Right.
That gives us a non-restricted balance of slightly more than 1.5 million, 1,544,704.
What is it, 1 million? You already done the math?
Do you see it over there on, to the right?
Yes.
See it?
Yeah.
Do you wanna leave that as unreached, non-restricted balance, or do you wanna move it to the Dunn Building?
Let's, let's go through it, and then we'll come back to it.
Okay. If you look at the restricted money, you've already approved 1,236,74 for the qualified nonprofits, and those letters have gone out. Have they started withdrawal down yet?
No.
Still working on the.
Some of them need their UWI numbers to be active, so they'll need one.
But UWI numbers are hard to come by, actually.
No, you just have to go and register it, and it's a little bit of a process, about six weeks.
So we've committed that money. We also committed, we originally thought that there would be a, about a $3 million addition put onto the Health Department. So the Health Department have, has provided $750,000 of funding. We also had a West Virginia Community Development Block grant that we received in the amount of 608,802.
608,000?
802, and that's on your sheet also.
Okay.
Under, if you look at restricted, under American Rescue.
Yeah, I see that, I just thought, all right, I got you, okay.
Which is, which.
I got you. You even drew a line to.
I did.
Huh?
Just for you, the big blue line.
All right. Just call me stupid.
Um, which leaves a restricted fund commitment, for now, of 1,641,198. Now, if you recall, we put it out for bid, we received four bids, we didn't open those bids because we had some, there was some, some issues that the state had with, with the bid specs, and council made the decision to move the administration of the Community Development Block grant over to our grants department, and we're prepared, if the council so chooses, to put that back out for bid.
I think we need to go ahead and put it back out the bid, Mr. Davis, and see where it comes in.
Are you, are you in agreement?
Yeah, I just have to get approval from the state, and when you tell me and give me the date, I'll send it to the state, and then they'll approve it, and then we can get it to the county.
Okay. So all we have to do is plug in when the bids are.
You have to tell me when the bids go out, and when they'll do that, and I can.
Okay. So is the consensus of the council to go out onto the street, at least get bids?
So we've got, we've got the problems corrected that we had originally, like due rate to the office.
Well, through.
But, but now you're, you're gonna manage it.
I have it ready to go to the state, because they have to approve it because it's a head grant, and so before we can put it up for bid, they have to give their approval and sign off, and I have that ready to go, just waiting for.
Just plug in due dates. So is that okay with the council?
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Now, I will tell you, I anticipate these bids to be a little higher than a typical bid. There's quite a bit, bit of reporting that's involved from the contractor's perspective that wouldn't be, wouldn't normally be involved. That's 608,000, that's a lot more reporting of all.
All right, I'd say, put it out the bid and see where it comes in.
And can we work with Tracy and give her some bids for bid opening and due dates, please?
So, so a question for you, is the recording that's required something that, that our staff can help with, or is that just strictly done by?
It's, they actually have to break it down to, you know, employees and, you know, number of hours, and, I mean, we've been through it before with other projects, but a lot more detail than typically would be involved.
Probably deal with the, same thing with the federal contract.
That's, that's exactly what it is.
Certified payroll and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we've done that with another project, but it's been allowed.
Yeah.
That's a pain in the ass.
You've also agreed to $7 million for the upgrades to the HBA C Systems in the Judicial Center in the Sheriff's Department, and that's ongoing now.
Right, it's already started.
Yes, sir. And then you have the request, the, the new request from the Water District, a million dollars for Pike Side and 1.6 million for Potomac. If you agree to all of those, as they're listed in the restricted column, that totals 12,477,272, which gives you an unrestricted, or a restricted fund balance of 670,298, if you see to the right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
Did it so far?
Okay.
Okay. Tracy puts a lot of pressure on me.
I see, you're, you're sweating.
I am. You can see the green on my.
I see, hedge starting to shine a bit more.
It is. Um, if you drop down to the next one, these are all projects that you've already funded. These are in the general fund or the coal severance. We've encumbered the fund, you'll see that under the general fund, we have money set aside for the roof at 750 Baltimore Street. That bid has been awarded for some time in the amount of 1,60,000. And the design of the Inwood Park Project was CEC at 54,500, and we do have CEC scheduled to come in here.
October 6.
October 6, to give you updates, not only on this project, but also the Frog Hollow Trail Extension.
That's what I was gonna ask, is the Frog Hollow Trail Extension money in here somewhere?
If you look over to the right, under coal severance.
Okay.
You'll see that the demolition for 126 West Canton Street, which has been approved in the amount of 90,881 with reclaim, is there. The study, which is a subcontract with the city of Martinsburg with CEC for the engineering and the design of the Frog Hollow Route 9 Trail in the amount of 57,000 is under coal severance. And then. And then the strategic plan development, uh, contract that you currently have with Michael Baker through Region Nine in the amount of sixty thousand, ten dollars is in there.
So when does one twenty six come in?
We were delayed a little bit, um, because we had, uh, electrical service that we had to wait for Tommy Edison, um, to, to move, we got that done pretty quick. Um, reclaim then wanted, um, the, um, the property, they wanted the corners of the property to be set. Um, we, we did that pretty quick, in fact, when we had the, uh, surveyor there, they found that the, the, the corners were already, were already there, we did, they just had.
They just had to locate them.
Um, so, um, reclaim has been working with the, um, the owner of the bank, the parking lot. They were supposed to start the, the last week in August, and then they got hired up for another job, so we expect them in there anytime. Um, we've already had the environmental study done, as you know, everything, it's just, it's just ready for them to, to come in and do the demolition.
Alright, so, um, first of all, I wanna thank you and Penny for doing such a nice job on this spreadsheet, I mean, Penny had to help you.
Penny did most of it.
I would have a lot of time to do this.
Yeah.
She would actually, um, if, if you see any of this and you want an amortization scheduled.
She would do that for me?
She would be happy to do that.
Can you do that on the fifty?
I like those sketches.
Yeah, fifty seven million, two hundred and forty six dollars, can you, that's, that's what that, those payments would be?
Ask her to throw a couple pivot tapes in there too, if she could.
Alright.
I, I gotta step out for like two minutes.
Okay, and that, you want us to wait?
It's up to you, just give me a minute.
Alright. Then what part, the fifty four, five, we've already committed to that too, right?
Yes, sir, that's already, we have that in the budget.
That's planned.
Right, and Sportsman's a sixty thousand, ten, that's the planning portion of that one too.
That's the strategic plan, yes, sir. So anything that's listed in the, the second section that says general funding coal severance committed and encumbered.
That's already.
That money's already in either the coal severance or the general fund budget.
Okay. Alright. I'm creating a little ledger here, so I know what we've.
The, the top part is fairly easy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so everything we've done so far is committed, other than, uh, the Health Department, one point six four one, um, the Dunn Building at seven point three, and the Pike Side Water Project, those three, we're sure we wanna move forward, we wanna do, but at the same time, they're not, they're not in stone like the others that we've already made, we've already taken action on the other ones.
You have, and just remember, this, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, that's, just because it's on this list, doesn't mean we're gonna stroke a check and send it out.
Right.
Um, we just have to have that money committed by the end of twenty twenty four. So it doesn't mean we have to spend it by twenty twenty four, for example, the Health Department. If it takes two years to get that project done, you, you, that's okay.
Right, generally does.
Same way with the Dunn Building, now the Dunn Building, they had on a pretty fast track, only because.
Disruption.
You know, it was the timing, um, of, of moving offices around based on, um, the, the anticipated flow of, of traffic through this building.
Well, yeah, we're, we're working on it, we're moving extension service, we already got rid of Region Nine.
Right, we have, I, I, we should.
Got rid of.
I was gonna say, what a way to put it.
I would imagine by.
They moved.
By the end of, by the end of October, we'll have extension service moved to seven fifty, um, as long as.
You think? Okay.
The drywall's done, um, we've ordered the, the, the drop ceiling, we're in the process, we just finished bids on flooring.
Drop ceiling, is that something that we're subcontracting, I was gonna say, cause you can't do it as cheap as they do it.
Nope.
And they do a much better job.
The roof, the roof has to be done, and if you go to seven fifty, there's massive rolls of steel. Um, all the insulation is there, these, the, the, the roof clips are, are holding this up.
So I guess the front addition, or not the front addition, but the remodeling of the front, I guess the roof's okay in that section?
It is.
Okay, leave him out there. They were trying to leave you out there, I heard them.
It was a matter of discussion.
You know, we, we were gonna reduce the size of the windows, remember we, we, we were out there a couple months ago. Um, we're keeping the, the size of the windows where they are, um, Berkeley Glass is actually gonna manufacture the windows on site. Um, but they're waiting for this, they're waiting for the material.
Wait for traffic.
So. Um, we, we have, we have all of that in alignment, it's just a matter, and we've got the, um, the air conditioning unit to order.
What do we end up doing, um, the exterior phase with? I know we talked about one thing, you and Jack talked about another, so.
But we were waiting for three and a half months to make the real decision.
You don't have to wait much longer?
We have, we haven't made, we haven't, we haven't finalized that.
Alright, alright, so let's move on.
Tax exempt bank qualified funds, um, we do have the R F P on the street, um, for tax exempt bank qualified funds, I've met with some of the local lending institutes, um, uh, who are very interested in it, uh, of course, the bonding companies. It was, it was interesting, I may, met with Dave Urban for, with, uh, City National Bank for about an hour and a half on Tuesday. And we were talking about the bond, the last bond issue. Um, they own some of our, they own some of our bonds and they, they wanted a lot more. Um, but our bond, our last bond issue sold out in minutes.
Right, yeah.
And said they could have, we could have sold probably two or three times the number of bonds that we did last time.
Yeah, yeah, I remember Greg and him talking about that, um, and the, the thing about that was, and we knew that, when we put it out on the bond market, we knew that the bank, local bank would be buying some of it, so that's good.
So they, they're very much interested, there's also a group of local banks, and, and, and apparently the Fed set the lending limits um, based on the size of the bank, um, it's my understanding that City National was large enough that they could do this project on their own. Um, but some of the other smaller, uh, institutes have, uh, lending limits of seven million dollars. So there's two or three or four of them that are going together, almost like a, uh, a coalition to.
Right.
To put a bid, bid on, and of course, the bonding companies or bond, the writers are very interested in.
Alright.
So you up, you, um, already committed to the L E D lighting upgrades, which we know that the return on investment is, will be pretty, um, pretty quick on that. Um, we also have, uh, one ten West King Street, um, which we envision someday, uh, as being a heritage museum. We did receive a seventy thousand dollar, um, grant from the West Virginia Commissional Arts for the Roof.
One that had to be spent.
Um, I, do you know what the two years, there you go.
Uh, Tracy?
She wasn't giving me the peace signs. Um, now, she and, um, she and Matthew are coming in next week, um, to talk about the project and some other funding possibilities.
Well, this morning you told me that there's a lot of money out there for historical projects, so that's good for this project.
My, my only concern, um, Matthew seems to think that there's a very, very good opportunity for this building to be described, to be designated as historically significant. Anytime we get involved in that, you, you, you know that suddenly a, a, a three million dollar, three point five million dollar project is.
Well, one ten wouldn't be, be a historical structure itself, but one hundred would be.
Well, no, he's talking about.
One ten.
Something that, that one ten might be eligible for, so I actually have Matthew and.
Yeah, he was.
Tracy coming in next week.
Yeah, it was because of, it's because of something that happened in there.
Yeah, something.
Yeah, something historical that happened in the.
I got my first loan there.
Yeah, that wasn't it.
Okay.
Yeah, wasn't it?
Alright, so.
There's no plaque there for that?
No picture neither, alright, so let's go, one, one ten King Street.
One ten, I have that at three five.
So we're, we're working on that next week?
We'll hear more about that next week, five twenty South Rowley Street, which is the addition to, um, the Health Department.
That's pretty, well, right, okay.
I.
The Day Report Center.
Or Day Report, I'm sorry, Day Report Center, I increased that to ten million dollars.
Right.
Which is the cost estimate that we were given, the most recent cost estimate that we were given, um, for a three-story addition. And then, of course, three fifteen West Stevens Street, which is the Crawford Building, I have that listed at fifteen million.
Okay, so then, let's go down to supplemental funding projects then.
So, and five twenty, five twenty may be available for some, uh, grant funding in the near future.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Or, or some, uh, or some of, uh.
The settlement stuff.
The settlement stuff, yeah.
Correct, and, and we have set up, or we're, we have set, we, yeah, we did set it up, if you recall, a month or so ago, we did set up a special revenue account. Primarily, I just, I met with Tim yesterday, um, we're starting, we've started Medicaid billing. Um, we really won't see that money in earnest, um, for, for a little while, but we will set that money aside in the special revenue account. Tracy has assured me by the end of the month, we'll have, um, approval for our SAMSA grant. Um, which is a million dollars a year, uh, and that money is not for new positions, it's not for, for, um, uh, additional expenses, it's to help us with the operation. Between the, um, the opioid settlement, the, um, and Medicaid alone, that, that'll be enough to make our bond payments, or anything that's affiliated with that.
Right.
And also remember that we also budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund that we put into, um, Tim's budget and to the Day Report Center budget for rent. And that rent money's been set aside, just like we do with, um, with eight oh two.
Right.
Um, it'll be a, you know, we, and we have to do the document, it'd be a triple net lease, um, so that we can show why it's being done, but we'll also put that towards the bond payments.
Right, right, but that project's under, we're, we're getting designed right now.
The, the outside part is done, they're doing the, the internal mechanics and things like that.
So, so we should, you know, within, by the end of the year, you should have that, that plan done so that it's a shovel-ready project.
It should be, yes, sir.
Yeah. We'll call it hammer-ready, I like that name.
And the, um, the, the proposals for the twenty million dollar financing are due next week. So I expect, I anticipate, um, at least three proposals.
Is it, is it, um, is it, have you, have you ever had any contact, I'm, I'm thinking it's Edward Jones, um, about the, uh, the bonding, do they get involved in that?
I think they buy some of the bonds.
And the reason I ask is because they gave some great numbers for CDs to the senior services. And we put, I think we got like short-term, like three percent, almost three percent on some CDs for six months.
Is that right?
Yeah, for six months, and, and, you know, it's, uh, um, it's pretty aggressive, I thought. Um, it may be, it may be worth getting ahold of them to, to see, um, if they're interested bidding on it anyway.
They wouldn't be interested in, in lending us the money.
The bond.
But if, if, for example, we do twenty million dollars worth of bonds, rather than let it lay at West Banco and draw it down from West Banco, one of the things that we did in the proposal is request, um, if you're not interested in giving us the money, tell us what kind of rate of return you give, you give us on twenty million dollars if we invested it.
Right, right. Yeah, in his case, right now, you might make money.
Right, yeah.
Or pay the payments and make money on the return.
Yeah. One of the things that one of the local lending institutes has been talking about is, um, giving us a long-term online credit.
Yeah.
We don't pay what we, what we actually draw down.
Alright, so supplemental.
Supplemental funding, um, most of everything that's in the supplemental funding, um, is a result of, um, discussions that you had during, um, the, the current year's budget preparations back in January, February, March. Um, these are all amounts that, um, you had, you had indicated that you might wanna provide some supplementing funding to the outside agencies. Um, we did have Nick Dylan here last week, um, to talk about, uh, the funding for the airport, not only, uh, to include not only the, um, the next year's airshow, but also some, some playground equipment. Um, everything down to, um, the Legion Baseball and the Roundhouse Authority were, um, were items that you had discussed as part of budget, you asked me to keep track of it and put it on this list.
We already committed the, the, the Roundhouse.
Right.
The thirty eight.
Was it sixty thousand for a transit? Just off the range trip?
Why don't we, why don't we, cause I know they ordered lunch and it's, but should be here by now, so why don't we work on the ones that, huh?
Not yet, it's coming.
Oh, not yet?
It'll be brought over.
Okay, well, not during open session.
It's you.
Alright, so. Let's work on the ones that are time-sensitive, I knew that the Roundhouse Authority was time-sensitive, that's why we did that. Eddie, you should also, I thought said historical Morgan Cabin was time-sensitive, it's not?
Uh, no, sir, it's, it's not now.
Okay. Anything there that you all see that's time-sensitive?
Well, it's landmarks, commission, it's empty.
I'm not sure exactly, other than insurance.
Well, they, they're, don't they have other expenses?
Well, there's, there's a realization that has no revenue stream whatsoever, but they do have expenses.
Yeah.
You know, uh, they currently insure the Morgan Cabin and, and the grounds there. I mean, they do have expenses, and, uh, Matt just brought to our attention this week a piece of property out on Allensville Road, that's a former Civil War hospital that was left to landmarks, but it's not been maintained. Yeah, I spoke to Mike Lang this morning to ask Steve to go look at, uh, go back to get, to look at and see if there's something that they can.
Where's that?
It's on Allensville Road, just before you get to the landfill on the left.
On the left?
Yes, sir, there's a monument there, currently like a educational type structure, small, plastic.
It's a little over acre.
But, um.
It's a nice time to ride and drive around the country and pull off the right side of the road and read those plaques.
Yeah, there's a place to pull.
For a motorcycle, there is, you just pull right on the shoulder.
So, I mean, land, landmarks, honestly, they, they need a revenue stream, and it doesn't have to be a whole lot, but we've got to be able to cover the insurance in particular, and then just some very basic administrative calls, you know, for paper, you know, products and stuff like that.
Okay.
And this, this council has already, whenever landlords has come in, you've pretty much, and they've never asked for a lot.
Right, right.
We've already funded it, we've always funded it pretty much what they ask.
They need to come in at the beginning.
Yes.
Let's see. Cycle and ask for that stuff.
Yeah, and this past year, they were in transition.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the ball kinda got dropped and I'll take some responsibility for that.
So you think they'll be here the next budget cycle?
Oh, I know they will be, yeah, and, and like I say, not for, um, not for a large amount of money, but just.
No, but they gotta come and ask.
Yeah.
Is there anything on the list that you absolutely want taken off? You know, and I'll, and I'll use this as an example, um, the Apollo Civic Theater asked for two hundred and forty five thousand dollars for a marquee. Well, and, and you know how I think about that, it's, it's, it doesn't make sense to me to put two hundred and forty five thousand dollars on a marquee when the building needs.
Well, and the.
It's almost like putting a card before the horse.
Right, but the, the city just, the city just gave them over three hundred thousand dollars to do the bulk of that exterior work to be done on the building, so.
We're working on the building now, I thought that was the marquee that was coming.
No.
No, they're working on corners and windows.
Right, and, and, I mean, the. And, and, I mean, the idea is to preserve that building for the future, you know, it's
What about acquisition on the backside? Talking about the corner, another piece of property to
Yeah, a small red house.
I thought that, I thought that money from the city was part of that. It's part of that in the demo for that small building.
Really, it's the building to the right that's more important to them.
Well, they gotta, yeah, they, that's the one they gotta take down, the little one in the back, they gotta take that, that down in order to be able to put an elevator in.
See, I don't know how an elevator's gonna help them on the backside. I mean, that's behind the state.
It's the, it's, it's the, I, I don't know.
There is a staircase there.
That's how it's designed.
I remember, I met Mr. Gokena back there about twenty years ago.
You remember that far?
I do.
But, but that's designed to, I mean, that's part of the design, so, I mean, I, 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 I think that's a good, I think that's a good use of funds to be able to help preserve that building for the future.
Well, I mean, if you wanted to look at it from an operational standpoint, I'm not gonna disagree with you, but
I actually had a conversation with Mike last night, actually, to talk about, you know, he's, he's decided that they're going to try to start doing some concerts now.
Well, I mean, I think the biggest thing they've been talking about for twelve years is HVA, at least twelve years, maybe fifteen, they don't have no air conditioning in that building, or very little.
They have some.
They have some, but they have to turn off when the show starts because it makes too much noise. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a, I mean, I guess they're gonna qualify for, for a huge amount of money, because that building does meet historical. Yeah, but we'd be better off to give matching funds on two million dollar, or, or ten million dollars than to give them two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on a marquee. Right? So I say keep it there for now, just to, just to figure out where it would be best spent.
Retake the money a little bit. If I can leverage that kind of money
Yeah.
for a grant.
I mean, ten percent match or two hundred thousand, my math's right, that's good for two million dollars. Yeah.
Is that something we're gonna look at for a grant?
I think Tracy's doing, Tracy and Elizabeth in April don't work for him now, right? Yeah. All right, I, I think there is one time-sensitive here, and that's gonna be the Legion Baseball, because I know Martinburg Baseball will be starting up in March. So that's gonna be very time-sensitive, it's either whether it gets started this year or next year.
He did a presentation from Development Authority yesterday and said that if he can, if he can secure two hundred thousand dollars by, by, within thirty to sixty days, he can, he can get it done this year.
Did they get the Martinsburg Little League's done, the infield's?
I don't think they're done yet.
I know that they got the money and they, I think they awarded a contract, because those are time-sensitive as well. Not near as much as, as, as this on high school baseball, but
Did the city pay for that whole cost?
Yeah. Yeah, two infield. I think at one time, they were asking for a baseball field complete, but then they found out that the infield is more important than the outfield. And so they decided to do two infield. That's the one closest to Rowley Street down the hole, and then the one up on top that they just got done doing all that money to. So
I've never been on that complex.
It's a nice complex.
Yeah, I've never been on, I mean, I've looked at it driving past and on the property that was right next to it, but I've never
If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Queen's been the president probably for twenty-five years plus.
Well, and former sheriff and commissioner, Shook Kishner, many years before.
Yep, and the galls. Yep, they've done, they've done a nice job there. Huh?
There's been a big commitment, you know, from the community a long time.
And the other thing about the, the Martinburg Little League is the county's grown and the city's grown at a much slower pace, so what's happening is, you can just imagine the recruiting and the people that play at Hedgesville and Sally Berkeley versus the city of Martinsburg. Big, big difference. So let's talk about the Legion Baseball Field. What do y'all, I mean, I see where you got a hundred, and you saying it's gonna take two hundred thousand dollars to get a commitment to get it done before next season. It's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project.
Eighty, isn't it?
Huh?
Three eighty, isn't it?
Three eighty-five.
Three eighty-five, about four hundred now.
Yeah. So what do we wanna do on that?
So, so let me run this by you.
Actually, three twenty-five to three fifty appears to be a safe number.
I spoke to Nick last week at the airport about the projects that he's requesting. And he said, on the three hundred thousand, that he could, he could live with a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And then I also questioned the amount of money for the playground, which truly, at the end of the day, he can do both of those, I believe, for three hundred thousand. So that frees up about a hundred seventy-five thousand out of, out of that side of the ledger. So we, we could take more money and put it over on the infield for that baseball. And the reason, other than Trip, who's, you know, you know, he's, he's attached to that and very passionate about baseball, they produce results over there. But also, if the bond or levy passes, I don't know which one, the school system, is it a bond?
Bond, I think.
If it passes, Musselman and Hedgesville both will have their infield's completed. Hedges, the city of Martinsburg, where this field is located,
Martinsburg High School.
The Martinsburg High School baseball team would then not have that field up to speed, let's just say. It, it will challenge them, especially with whether the amount of use that, between the baseball team and the Legion team, it gets a lot of abuse, so I, I have no problem in bumping those figures up for that Legion. Because we can save a little bit of money at the top.
Off Nick?
Yes, sir.
And Nick can, Nick can get the job done. Just tell, just tell, Nick, we, we expect you to get it done, by golly, he'll do it, right? He, he, he won't let us down, that's for sure. So if that's the case, are you saying to get the project going on the Legion Baseball Field, to go ahead and do the two hundred so they can get it done this fall?
I'm at one fifty or two hundred, I'm, I'm, I'm good with either one.
Well, it is our property.
It is.
And I'm not mistaken, hasn't the Martinsburg Blue Sox back years ago when they had a team, didn't they play on that field too?
No, they played out where the Moose is today.
Okay, right there where the softball diamonds were, okay. Old David Trail out there, did you watch him pitch out there?
Paul Creek.
Paul Creek? Yeah. Paul was an instructor of mine. Tried to teach me right from wrong in masonry class. And I'll tell you another one, there was, Norm Seaver, they say he's a heck of a pitcher.
So I can, I can go either.
Well, I was, I was favoring one fifty, but at the same time, I don't want them to be fifty grand short to get the project done before next spring. And I know what it's like to do that, I, I personally signed personal notes for the girl's softball field when we done that. And I was committed, if no one else was, me and two others, I believe it was three of us. Then you're forced to do fundraisers, you know, nobody else does it. And I know that Martinsburg Little League Boosters and Martinsburg Little League has a fundraiser every year. And I think they do about thirty-three thousand, they split it.
Well, I know that the Martinsburg Baseball Boosters have been working very hard to upgrade that facility, so
Well, they probably, I, they probably have got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars invested in that facility themselves.
No doubt.
Oh, yeah, I'll bet more than that.
Yeah, especially in the last several years.
Right.
There's been some large investments made over there. So I'm okay with the two hundred.
I'm okay with the two hundred.
Sure.
You want a motion?
Just real quick, we're, we're two and a half months into fiscal year. We could be having some pretty substantial bond payments that we're gonna have to be making that haven't been built into this, plus we just to, and, and, you know, I called the council for taking care of our employees, but that was an expense. And, and whatever you wanna do, I'll, I'll make it work, I'm, I'm just a little concerned, particularly that fifty percent threshold for purposes of having the money available. If you decide to provide funding, can we take this two hundred thousand dollars out of quality of life?
Can we split it?
Well, I mean, I'll do it any way you want. I, I may even be able to, I'll have to look at coke severance, I think coke severance is running a lot stronger than what we anticipated for the first two months. I might be able to take it out of coke severance.
Let's do the quality of life, we can, we
I fit in the quality.
We haven't used it for
We have three million, one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars in quality of life as of this one.
It's easy. But we're planning on using some of that for the Inwood Park as well.
Well, under quality of life, just so you know.
We had, we have a hundred million set out?
I designated three million dollars for the airport airshow.
Not three million, don't make, don't make it that easy for Nick.
I'm sorry, three hundred thousand for the airport airshow.
Nick could be listening.
Oh, you bet your butt Nick's listening.
Three hundred thousand for the airport airshow. Now, I had a hundred thousand, but now two hundred thousand dollars for Legion Baseball. I set aside a million dollars for the Inwood Park, and five hundred thousand dollars for the trail.
Okay.
If you do all those, if you, if you bump baseball up to two hundred thousand, that would give you a remaining balance of one million, one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
We can always put money in that.
Put money in that.
And it's all, and it's all, it's all unrestricted.
Correct.
Right? Just as long as it's got something to do with quality of life.
And that's the restriction that you put on there, that restriction, it's only a restriction that's been put on by the council.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, any further discussion? And that money will be taken out of Quality Life Fund. Yeah. Yeah, Ed made the motion, Dan seconded. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
And, and we have some development projects that we should be getting some quality of life money from, for example, the
Right, coming in?
Yeah, so, you know, we'll be replenishing that, but we, since you've put the money in there, we've never touched it.
Right.
And we build on it, and these are some good, some, some projects I think certainly would be well-served.
All right. All right, that's all for today then, right?
Yes, sir, I have it back home for next week also for further discussion.
All right, we need a motion to go in executive session, or any ideas from the public? Need a motion to go in executive session for what matters?
I need executive session for
Real estate?
Real estate and possible litigation.
We are in executive session.
All right, we're out of executive session. No action will be taken. Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, I'm ready to recess.
We are recessed.